All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education at 7:03 PM on March 15, 2022. I will continue what we've done virtually and doing a roll call for those of you who are perhaps joining us for the first time or those who might watch later and not be familiar with who's here onstage. So I will call your name and simply acknowledge that you're with us. I'll start with board members. I am Deb Schut, and I am the chair. Jay Spivak, vice chair.
I'm present. Thanks, Deb.
Jeff Fleishman, secretary.
Present. Thank you.
Jackie Blaya is virtual with us tonight. We see her on the screen. Thank you, Jackie. Laura Young.
Present. Thank you, Deb.
Lynn Katz.
Present. Thank you.
Sage Singh.
Present. Thank you, Deb.
Katie Kappasak.
Present. Thank you.
Lisa Seminare is unable to join us this evening. I'll move on to administrators. Dr. Bridget Heston-Carnemola, our superintendent.
Present. Thank you.
Dr. Donna Nessler-Rusak, our assistant superintendent.
Present. Thank you.
Mr. Roberto Medic, Director of Human Resources.
Present. Thank you.
Ms. Susan Russo, our business manager.
Present. Thank you.
And joining us in the front, Ms. Shirley Moy, our executive assistant to the superintendent and our board clerk. Thank you, Shirley. All right, I am excited to do our Pledge of Allegiance a little differently this evening. We have the pleasure of having two students lead us in it tonight. I will introduce David and Giselle if you'll all stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the flag of the United States of America, with liberty and justice for all.
So good. So we have the pleasure of having two staff with us this evening to speak to it. Mr. O'Keefe, I believe you'll come forward to Ms. Parsons. We wanted to acknowledge that you're here as well.
How are you? Thank you so much for allowing us to be part of your evening tonight. I think Giselle and David did a great job, obviously. Of course, Giselle wears fantastic sweaters. And, I'm sorry. Is that better? Sorry. Giselle always wears these fantastic sweaters, and they're always very colorful. And of course, the day we taped this, she wore green, and she disappeared in front of the screen. So we had to re-tape her. But the kids did a great job, and I think what was so exciting about it was the reaction we got from the school. And I think it demonstrated that media kind of has a unique way of creating a connection between people. We've had more people come up, and other than just saying hi or how are you, they can actually say, "I really liked your performance. I love what you said." And it was exciting. And I think that signals that media can create truly unique vehicles for inclusion, and it's really an exciting time in education. As our initiatives expand with live streaming and these kind of newscasts, I think it's critical that we're continuing to look for areas of inclusion, because they exist, they're theirs. We just have to find them, like I think we found tonight. And thank you so much for letting us show this to you.
That was a perfect way to get us started. Thank you so much. We're so grateful. I will read our mission statement. I always like to begin our meetings there so that it reminds us of the work that we do together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning, and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. So I love that that always leads us right into our recognition portion of the meeting. And we will start with Avon Achievers. We have Ms. Borio, our principal from Pine Grove School, along with Ms. Buckle, our assistant principal, to acknowledge an Avon Achiever for us.
So we are here this evening to recognize Mr. Kevin Fuller. Kevin is the owner of Dunphy's Ice Cream Shop in Bristol, Connecticut. He is, also happens to be a custodian at Pine Grove School. And tonight, we're recognizing him for his generosity of time, talents, and resources. Kevin has been coming in before his shift early in the afternoon, and before clocking in, he comes and reads to our classes. So he's gotten into some first grade and some kindergarten classes, and his goal is to make it to all kindergarten and first grade classes, just of his own accord, because he thought that would be a nice thing to do. So he's been coming in to do that. Prior to this time, Kevin has donated endless amounts of popsicles and ice cream to our school. As the owner of Dunphy's, he has donated popsicles for whole-school celebrations. He's also noticed that classes are working on personal reading goals, and he's donated Ice Cream Sunday celebrations to classes, individual classes, just kind of randomly. I hear about it after the fact, because he thought that was a great idea. So Kevin, I also found out recently, had donated some Chromebooks to a family in deep need during the pandemic who had a tragedy, and just went out of his way to make sure that they had access remotely to the curriculum and to the work and to the classroom. So he made that donation personally to a family. His generosity really exceeds what you would expect of an individual in the community. So Kevin, tonight, thank you so much. We recognize you for your generosity. Thank you for what you do for the Pine Grove School community. We're so grateful.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Kevin, as you're sitting there, I just want to acknowledge how much we appreciate you as well. What a wonderful thing to hear that a custodian reads to our students and brings them treats, which everybody in this room and whoever watches after, let's all visit Dunphy's now and get some ice cream to support you as well. So that is just incredibly kind, and it speaks to, I think, how we started this meeting with having students read the Pledge of Allegiance to us, all different inclusivity, that every person in this district matters, and you're making a difference in students' lives because you're connecting with them on that level. So we appreciate you. So thank you for taking the time to let us celebrate you tonight. So another round of applause. Excellent. So another piece of exciting news. The middle school has determined that they needed a new mascot. And so we're going to find out tonight who won in that. And I would like to introduce Mr. Giannini here. Yes, thank you. And Mr. Macy is with him, and we do have some students that will come forward and speak to that. Can't wait to hear how it ended.
So this has been quite the exciting moment for us at Avon Middle School, because we were the one school, I'm stealing a little bit of your thunder, but we were the one school in town that didn't have an official mascot. So our community council's been working really hard on this. I'm actually going to turn it over to them, because they've got some comments prepared for you to kind of walk you through the process.
Thank you, Mr. Giannini. Hello, I'm Lauren Teton. I am the student council president of Avon Middle School. Dr. Carnemola, Mrs. Schut, and esteemed Boran members, thank you for giving us time to give some information about our proposed mascot, the AMS Black Bears. Here are three AMS Student Council representatives who will tell you more about what we've been So first off, why should AMS have a mascot? Well, as Mr. G said, we were the only school, Avon Public School, that does not have a mascot. And we believed that the middle school should have a different mascot from the high school, because each school has our own unique experiences and our own unique student body. It would also build school spirit and community. And after the last two years of COVID challenges and stresses, we strongly believed that adopting a mascot for the first time in AMS history would be a very positive event to help the students and staff look to the future and build more school spirit.
So what was our process? We started out by having conversations about the why and the how. We had our class representatives go to their classes and ask what the students really wanted to be represented by. And obviously, the student council had some very spirited debates, including presentations, petitions, you name it. And we finally narrowed it down to a list of six. We created campaign posters and put them around the school. And truly, I guess we're just building a whole new generation of politicians. We had the students rank their choices from one through six, and finally, with a very close vote, the Black Bear was nominated as the top mascot.
Following through with the victory of the Black Bear, last week, we had a number of student artists submit sample mascot logos for consideration by the AMS administration and student council. Going forward now, we will be sending one or more of the student submissions to work with a professional graphic artist and refine for our final draft logo of our AMS Black Bear. We will also host a new student survey, asking for suggestions on our mascot's name, and going through the process of evaluation to narrow the list down and eventually choosing a name. Hopefully, all this will lead to us achieving our goal to have a mascot logo and name for an official launch by the end of the school year.
We hope this has been informative. Thank you for taking time, and we hope this, and now I will hand it over to Dr. Carnemola. Go Black Bears!
Thank you. Go, Mr. G.
Well, I just want to say, great job. You know, did a perfect job representing Avon Middle School. And I also wanted to just take a moment to recognize Mr. Macy, who's here this evening. He's the teacher who leads our student council, and he works tirelessly on their behalf. So thank you, Mr. Macy. He wanted to kind of sulk into the shadows, but we said we wanted to recognize himself. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you again, Mr. G, Mr. Macy, and students. That was excellent. This is not a normal time that it would turn over to me at a Board of Education meeting. However, as you have seen on the agenda, March is Board of Education Appreciation Month, and we have some special guests here with us tonight from Avon, also from Avon Middle School. One of our newest additions to the music education department, who has been doing a fantastic job, happy to have you here with us tonight, Mr. Saroy, and students from
Thank you very much, Dr. Carnemola, and everyone who's here tonight, members of the Board of Education and our administrators. Very happy and grateful that you invited us here this evening to share some music with you. And it's especially meaningful to me to be able to do that during Board of Education Appreciation Month. I have felt very welcomed here, not only by students and my colleagues, but also by members of the community, and that really does stem from community leaders like yourself. So we certainly appreciate all that you do, and I should also say that March also happens to be Music in Our Schools Month, so such an appropriate way to do this this evening. I'd like to introduce two students here, Jotun Venkit, who is playing alto saxophone, and Bryn McCracken, flute, both eighth graders at Avon Middle School, and both students who just represented Avon Middle School at the Connecticut Northern Region Music Festival. This was held in Simsbury this past Saturday. And about, there are just over 30 other school districts and private institutions that are represented at this festival, and students go through a fairly rigorous audition process to be accepted. And so it's a great honor to be accepted to that festival, and I'm sure you'll be impressed with what they're playing this evening. So we're going to present a piece of music for you. This is Pockabell's Canon as a duet, alto saxophone and flute.
Well, I definitely want to acknowledge how incredibly beautiful that was. That was so meaningful to us. It's always great to have students here with us and to be back in person and have you here and perform was such a treat. So thank you very much. It shows, and I was so impressed that you were using a computer to read the music. I don't like, technology is everywhere. So that was fantastic. Beautiful job, ladies. Thank you, Mr. Saroy. That was excellent. Thank you so much.
Just a few more words so that you all know what else has been brought to you, mostly by our students tonight. It was exciting for us that the first time we were able to come back in person since August, also happened to be Board Appreciation Month, where we could showcase a lot of the great work that's going on in schools, but in recognition of this Board of Education helping us to continue to do the good work that we do. And as you know, it has not been an easy couple of years. It certainly has not been, when, March 2020, I guess? So we're at the two-year mark and finally starting to feel that we're coming back a little bit to normal. And there were many decisions, many meetings, many difficulties along the way that all of you here with us tonight were helpful to us in navigating through, even more so than you might be in a typical school year, because nothing about the last two years was typical. So I want to thank you again for coming out, our staff and students from the schools, and just point out to you, so I can recognize some of our students and staff that are not here tonight, but that prepared things for the board. First of all, as you walked in, you might have noticed there was a slideshow going on the Ben Q boards. That was what our students decided they would do at Avon Middle School to recognize the board members. So they went the technological route, and every one of those slides was done by an individual student at Avon Middle School. We didn't put their names on them. Many of them put their own names on to thank you, but we removed them just to make sure that we weren't dealing with any media restrictions and the like, and were able to let all the students who wanted to say something be able to say something. If you weren't able to see that, it's in your bags. The presentation was printed out. Another thing, our Thompson Brook students were pretty excited to be able to reopen the Makerspace at Thompson Brook, which, as you know, with some of the restrictions we had to follow for a while, we were unable to effectively use. And so we have started back with that again at Thompson Brook. And one of the things students love to do most in Makerspace is design and make buttons. So I know all of you out there can't see it, but there's a button in your bag, and those were specially designed for you, the Board of Education members, in appreciation for all you do for our schools by Mrs. Benigno's students, Riley Morris, Arev Norria, Sophia Nikolescu, and Diana Pavronik. So thank you, TBS, for the buttons. And then the rest of what you'll see, I don't, I'm sure one of you has, just so that everyone can see what's there. Our younger students, as you can see, like to do some artwork instead of technology. So we hope you enjoy getting to see some of the great work that we are able to see our students do every day here in Avon. One last thing, as you know, we, as the district administrative team, like to make sure that we recognize you with some Avon swag each year. Last year, it was hard outdo last year because it was the, maybe that was the year, actually that might have been the year before, because we lost all track of time in the pandemic. We had a nice Yeti mug, coffee mug for Avon Public Schools. This year, we thought maybe since we were back in person, you might need clothing to return. So we have three-quarters zip. They'll have the Avon logo on them. This one, this one does not. There's a supply chain challenge, which is the way of things now, but Shirley will be in touch with you. We didn't want to offend anyone asking for or presuming any sizes. And so there's a form, it's confidential, and you'll get one of those that we have set up with the vendor in town. So thank you for your countless hours. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your dedication, and we appreciate you.
Thank you so much. I always, I know all of us enjoy looking through these. Anytime the students have a hand in it, it just makes it so much more impactful. We appreciate you for appreciating the work that we do. I appreciate working with each one of you as well. This is good work, and it's good to be at the table and having these conversations. And thank you for your patience with us. We're all going through this together, and it's worth it. The students are here, and that's what it's all about. And so I'm glad that we were able to see you tonight. And I will give you permission, if this was your purpose for coming this evening, if you would like to leave, you're welcome to stay and witness the rest of the meeting. But if you have other things, we totally understand, and we are just grateful that you joined us for the time that you did. Go Black Bears! I think that was a perfect choice. So thank you again. All right. Excellent. Now we get on to the usual course of business. I'm looking for approval of the Board of Education regular monthly meeting minutes from February 15, 2022. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by, was that Katie? I can't see.
It was Lynn.
Lynn, thank you. I'm going to have to get used to seeing all of you sideways rather than front-on. So thank you. Just, and just raise your hand for me, maybe that'll help me too. But thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jackie's in there too? All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Is there anyone who joined us this evening to communicate as the public? Okay, I'll ask you, you can come forward. I will just read for you the guidelines that we started to give when we were meeting virtually. So as you're making your way, I'll read this for you. "This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and/or concerns with the board. It is not an opportunity for conversation, rather, it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to the time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with a previous comment, and if you'd prefer to be brief, brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not." Ms. Moy has agreed to be our timekeeper tonight. So if you should reach two and a half minutes, she will alert you with a 30-second warning, and then at the three-minute mark, you'll be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We do have Mr. Connelly in the back. Jim, if you want to just wave for us. When you finish, if you don't mind telling him your name and address again so that we can have proper spelling for the record. And now, the floor is yours.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to me. My name is Erin Dawson. I reside at 50 Oak Bluff in Avon. I have one child that attends Pine Grove School. What I wanted to comment on was last meeting, there was a policy change to the minority recruitment plan. And as a parent, I was elated to see that policy change go through. I think it is past due for Avon to take on the task of actively recruiting minorities into full-time staff positions within our school district. Avon is a rich, diverse community. Over 20% of the community is people, are people of color, and Avon Public Schools is sadly lacking and sadly does not even approach the number that we need to be at in order to reflect the population of the community. And I am of the opinion that a school district should reflect the individuals that it serves within the community. And if our community is 20%, then our staff, our teachers, our administration should reflect the population of the community. In terms of the benefits, I can go on all night about what it does for a minority student to see him or herself reflected in positions of authority, in positions of comforting. They need to be there as coaches, as mentors, as tutors, as role models. And to deprive our children of this opportunity is to do a disservice to them. And I think it is a disservice to the community not to have proper minority representation. And so I challenge the board to take its policy changes seriously and come up with a real plan, an actionable plan, to go out there and recruit qualified candidates that will love our students the same way that the current teachers love and embrace our students. And I expect to see success in that minority recruitment plan and actual hires in the fall. I'm definitely watching. I know the community is watching, and we're looking forward to good things. So I thank you again for your attention tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. So just see Mr. Connelly at the back. Was there another person that wanted to come forward?
Hi, my name is Chloe Knopf. I reside at 18 Oak Ridge Drive in Avon, here in Avon. I am a former student from Avon Public Schools. I had kind of a general question. I know that, I know this is not a conversation, like a conversational format, but I'm curious, I'm just curious why there's still the masks required to enter the building sign outside, despite the fact that the mask mandate was lifted. It seems kind of strange it's still up. If it's obsolete, I don't know what it's still doing up there, but if anyone has any explanation for me, I can, I mean, I can give you my contact info, but I just was wondering because it just kind of seemed strange. But yep, that's my comment. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Knopf. Is there anyone besides Ms. Knopf? Okay, Dr. Carnemola.
The chair has given me permission, Chloe, Ms. Knopf, to answer the question. I'll hang on until... Chloe, is it on the glass? We've had, the glass has special coating on it for security reasons, and they've had some trouble getting some of them off. So they've been working on it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to items of information and proposals. We do have Sawyer Hernandez with us tonight. We don't have Charlotte Perry, so Sawyer, can you give us an update from the student's perspective?
Of course I can. Oh, wow. Okay. First things first, you know, this is actually my first in-person board meeting, which is wild. I've been doing this for almost two years now. So kind of came in at the best time, but you know, we made it here. It's really awesome to see all of you guys. Again, someone reiterated that it's kind of weird to see sideways instead of up front. Don't, I'm so sorry if I forget some of your faces, because I usually just pin Mrs. Schut or Shoot, but I promise I will remember all of your names eventually. Shute, or Shoot, but I promise I will remember all of your names eventually. But it's great to see you all, and it's great to be here. And it is also Board Appreciation Month, and I would be remiss if I didn't remind the board how grateful I am and what a pleasure it is serving alongside all of you guys. I've learned so much as a student of Avon High School in my ability to reflect, my ability to pass on information from the student body. It's a, it's a privilege, and it's a pleasure, and I have consistently seen that the board has always had the school's best interest in mind. And honestly, I'm very proud to be a part of that and proud to be able to witness it firsthand and communicate that back to the student body. So thank you. My printer was not working, so I will be referencing my phone. I'm so sorry. So in lieu of my junior board rep, Ms. Perry, who is not here, I'll be going through all of the schools. I like to do a rundown. For anyone who's not familiar, all the rundowns of all the schools and any of the up-and-coming news or anything that's been happening in the, in recent times. Start with Pine Grove School. Conferences were underway or have completed. Naturally, that's sort of through the entire district. In fact, Avon will be having its own conferences the next two days. It is Read Across America Week, and obviously with our younger students, that's going to be important to be promoted throughout the Pine Grove School, TBS, and you'll see that reflected later. And finally, from Pine Grove Schools, there's been a recent competition with Roaring Brook and the Avon Dollars for Scholars fundraiser, which is, of course, the Avon School District's fund for, for, or scholarship for up-and-coming seniors who might need financial assistance going to college. So it's awesome to see that sort of competitive spirit and sort of that fiscal responsibility when it comes to raising money for ultimately a great cause. I'm gonna move on to Roaring Brook School, and I want to thank Mr. Sturm and Ms. Horvath for all the information they provided through the Roaring Brook School newsletter. Once again, conferences have been conducted, and winner assessments have been conducted. Interestingly enough, Roaring Brook School's first-ever story walk, I, I hope it's still up. I remember it was on the, it was on the bulletin, but that was Roaring Brook School, Roaring Brook School's first-ever story walk, and essentially a story walk for any of those who are not familiar. You know, it's Read Across America Week. So it's basically an illustrative path that was along, I think, the courtyard of Roaring Brook School, or is along the courtyard of Roaring Brook School. So it's really awesome to see sort of these innovative ways that sort of incentivize kids to read and sort of incentivize people to get back out in the community and engage with their schools. Oh, and yes, once again, thank you to all of the staff and volunteers who helped organize that, because I know it was labor-intensive. Moving on now to Thompson Brook School. The second trimester ends on Thursday. There has been a Ukrainian support drive for Ukrainian refugees and any of those in the crisis zone. So that's a really proactive step from Thompson Brook that I would like to personally commend. It's something that I think I would, we should probably reflect here at the high school, and as the head of a few clubs, I think I should probably make that happen in hindsight. But very, certainly a very proactive step from Thompson Brook School and worth commendation. They're currently preparing for, you know, sort of the move upward. Thompson Brook School being sort of the juncture between the middle school and the younger schools. So obviously, there's been preparation with staff and students for the move from fourth to fifth grade, and of course, the move from sixth to seventh grade into the middle school. So that's interesting, something to take note of. And finally, Seussical the Musical, which, interesting note, I actually did when I was in sixth grade, so I might actually go see it for nostalgia's sake. But that will be performed at TBS on April 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. Like to move on now to Avon Middle School. There has been the creation of a new initiative for an outdoor learning space at Avon Middle School. Currently, Avon Middle School is vetting and receiving volunteers and leaders to formalize plans for a new potential outdoor space at AMS. Obviously, they're gonna need help fundraising, they're gonna need help creativity, they're gonna need help gathering, gathering resources and managing bids. So any interested volunteers, if that's still going on. Across all, across all schools, spring signup for sports has begun to any interested parties. Parent-teacher conferences are also coming up on the 31st and 1st. And finally, Matilda Jr. will be featured March 18th to March 19th at the AMS Cafeteria. I personally have never seen Matilda, so again, might go see that one. AHS, I want to thank Mr. Rankwitz, Mr. Kimball, all those responsible for the newsletter. Wouldn't be possible to receive this information without them. There's a, the Project Graduation is holding a month-long raffle in April. You can enter to win a fantastic prize of gift cards that will help support Project Graduation, which helps, you know, graduating seniors. The St. Patrick's Day Dodgeball Tournament was actually held today. Waiting to see who the winners were, had some personal bets going, so I'll be interested to see who won. There'll be, there, just a PSA, there are a limited number of yearbooks available, so, and they will be sold out soon, so order now to, order now to secure a copy for yourself. Back, moving on to general information that is, you know, relevant for all school districts. Obviously, we are a few weeks in, or rather, a week in to the transition of a maskless school across the district. This has been an interesting change for a lot of students. It's something, you know, as the student representative, I feel qualified to touch on. It's been an interesting, it's been an interesting transition. I feel like I keep blowing into this mic. It's bothering me. But it's, it's been an interesting transition. There's been a lot of compatibility, there's been a lot of proactivity, and, you know, I would say I and the district are most pleased to see that many of the students who have chosen to stay masked have been perfectly amenable to those who want to be maskless and vice versa. So this was certain, it's certainly a, a result that's, you know, something to be proud of. There's been a lot of collaboration across all fronts to make sure this could happen safely. And as far as I know, it seems like this has been a relatively smooth procedure that, you know, I think a lot of people were holding their breath and waiting for it to happen. So very optimistic note there. And I think that's all I have for the board today in regards to the student perspective.
Thank you, Sawyer. We appreciate it. You covered all the schools, and it's always good to hear your perspective, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our financial report, Ms. Russo.
Good evening. The Finance Committee did not meet this month, so we will not present the financials.
Thank you. Onto committee and liaison reports, curriculum and professional practices. I don't know if Jackie has anything to share. We're gonna try our best. We can't hear you, Jackie. All right, try again, Jackie. Nothing? You're good? Okay. Do you, okay, we'll let, Dr. Carnemola has an update.
I, I, on behalf of Ms. Blaia, I believe she was about to say our next meeting is on March 30th at 6:00 PM, and we'll be making determinations about the agenda for that soon. Ms. Blaia and I have spoken a little bit about it already.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Finance, Jay?
As Susan stated, we did not meet this month, but our next meeting is gonna be Tuesday, April 19th at 6:00 PM.
Excellent. Thank you. Negotiations. We are not currently actively in a negotiation process at the moment, but we do have some coming up, so nothing to report at this time. Policy, Laura?
The Policy Committee did not meet in March. However, our next meeting is scheduled for April 5th, likely timed to be at 6:00 PM. However, sometimes we do it at 6:30, depending on who can get there. And I just wanted to just add that when we do pass our policies here at the board, too, that information is included in both the board packet, and it's also readily, easily available to see in our minutes. So for anybody who's interested in seeing that, they can find that information there, as well as by going on the district website and looking at all our policies there.
Thank you, Laura. All right. Jackie, is there anything for the Crec Council? You're good? Are they meeting tomorrow as usual? Yes, okay. Good. Excellent, thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, next is our board chair update. I just wanted to acknowledge how grateful we truly are to be in person again. This is, it feels a little weird to, to do this with you, but we're grateful to have the opportunity. I am grateful to everybody who orchestrated this positioning on the stage. It's much kinder than it was when we tried this in August. The lighting is much better, and we can actually see the audience, which is great. It's just nice to be amongst you all again in person, so thank you for putting this together for us so that we could do that. It's good to be with you all. We also appreciate the administrators and the staff that have navigated this transition. We do have mitigating factors and strategies that we're still using for our COVID-19 circumstances, but grateful to hear that the optional masking has gone well. So thank you for spearheading that and everybody working together so that it is a smooth transition, and I'm grateful to hear that it's going well on both sides. So thank you, Sawyer, for sharing that perspective. That truly does matter to us. I do want to remind board members that I have organized a School Finance 101 training on March 21st at 6:00 PM, so that's next Monday, if you are interested. It is a virtual training for us. I have invited members of the Town Council and Board of Finance. I know of at least two Board of Finance members that would like to join us. It's basically gonna walk us through what the formulas are and how Avon gets funded. So it is specific to our town, so I'm interested in hearing the information, so I'm just reminding you, and I might send another email to help you, plus I'll have the link for all of you. That is it for me, and I will now go to the superintendent's report with Dr. Carnemola.
Thank you. I will start, Mr. Meddick, with the hiring report.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you. For the March 2022 hiring report, we are pleased to welcome Mrs. Wintemute and Mrs. Del Giudice, two new employees, a pair educator and a nurse for a student. I'd like to thank Ms. Carlson, who served as our lunch monitor and district courier for a portion of this school year and had been with us as nutrition service employees for several years prior. And also, we do have one retirement. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Dr. Robert Voitek, who has served as the Director of Technology, as well as other positions within the district, as a school administrator, as a teacher. We have been very fortunate to expand our technology programming in the district under his leadership, and we want to congratulate him on moving into the next phase of his life, and we look forward to staying in touch with him and want to thank him again. We do have several non-certified openings that we continue to actively recruit and hire for, and we remain fully staffed in our certified field as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meddick. In the enrollment report, just a few notes. Number one, we have 103 children fully registered for kindergarten for the upcoming school year, and we have an additional 30 that have started the process, so at present, we're looking at about 160, which is what we would expect to see generally speaking, but as you know, we, things can change a whole lot between here and the summer, so we're keeping an eye on that. Our number of homeschooled students has declined. We are down to 12. I think I reported at the last meeting, we're either 26 or 29. We've had a number of our students return to us, and also a couple that had moved from district, so were removed from our homeschooling report. Insofar as our strategic plan update, we have continued our professional development as an administrative team and also with teams of individual teachers, school counselors, school social workers in school climate, school culture, restorative practices, responding to trauma, and that has been going very well. We had a four-hour training last week, I believe, and we have another four-hour training tomorrow just for the administrators, and that would mean the entire administrative team has finished the overview of the restorative practices training, which we're gonna speak a little bit more about at our Curriculum and Professional Practices meeting on the 30th. I also had the good fortune of being invited today to watch and listen as Dr. Joanne Freiberg and Pat Sekone presented the work that they've been doing, often statewide, and including some of what they're doing here with us in Avon today at the, I'm going to miss one of the words, because it's a very long titled committee that the state has put, there was a task force, the committee, state has put together on social, emotional learning, school and school climate. And it's a very large, fairly unruly in-number committee that makes it, I think, probably difficult to get very much accomplished much of the time. But there was an excellent presentation today from Dr. Freiberg and Ms. Sekone and stakeholders from all over the state that I was able to watch. I believe it was streamed on Facebook Live, so I would assume you are still able to find it there and/or the webinar online, though I will say I've had some difficulty finding minutes from those meetings at the state level online. I think, again, it's just the number of people and the changes in leadership. Also, I wanted to recognize, you heard me speak at one of our last meetings, we had two staff members, one here at Avon High School and one at Pine Grove School, who wanted to find a way to change programmatically, making connections between our students who participate in our Avon Public Schools from the Open Choice Program, between Avon High School and our younger folks down in the elementary schools. We had, pre-pandemic, we had begun some mentorship opportunities of students in general from the high school and some earlier grade levels. And obviously, with the change in restrictions and so on, we didn't continue that at present. However, Ms. Lebowski at Pine Grove and Ms. Mooning here spoke with each other, two administrators, Ms. Boreo and Mr. Rankwitz also were involved, as well as bringing some of us in from Central Office, and had an idea to pilot a smaller version of a program whereby we could connect our older Avon High School Open Choice students with our younger students at Pine Grove. It's not at Roaring Brook, because as I said, we were trying, it is a small pilot this year, given the restrictions and so on. And I had the good fortune of being able to be present at the first meeting between those students Monday, yesterday. We had the young, they were all young men here from Avon High School, did some training with Ms. Lebowski, our kindergarten teacher at Pine Grove, about reading with kindergartners, because they were engaging in some, first, some icebreakers with the kids to get to know them, coloring and just talking about families, pets, and so on. And then they were, they chose books that the kindergartners liked to read. Actually, we had a few first graders, or maybe even one third grader. I think we had seven of our Pine Grove students that were able to participate yesterday. So last week, the Avon High School students were trained in reading and asking questions and wait times and so on, crash course in that here between our Pine Grove kindergarten teacher and the students. In the previous week, then yesterday, they took the bus down here from here at 1:30 down to Pine Grove and spent about an hour with the Pine Grove students. There were 14, I believe, students, 11, 11 students, there should have been 14. 11 students from the high school and seven from Pine Grove. We had some absences, so we had some students double up, and we expect to see some more. We had to go through a process for parent permission and so on also, so it's a fledgling program at this point. But it was very nice to see the students were very excited, having great conversations with each other and getting to know each other, and really looking forward to being able to grow that program, because I think it's, it's important for our students who are coming in from choice as younger students and trying to make their way through Avon Public Schools in a town they don't live in, to be able to see at the other end of the spectrum our, our students that are at graduation and have that to look forward to and to make those kinds of connections. So I want to thank, I'm sure we'll do this a little bit more officially at another point, but I thought it was important to bring up that the first of those meetings has happened, and I believe the next one will be Tuesday of next week. For our strategic plan update, also, I'm gonna pause for a moment, and I'll have Dr. Nestle Rusek speak a little bit about the continued curriculum development and Readers' Writers Workshop work that has been being done, and has been a flurry of activity, particularly over the last few months, in continuing our work on our blueprint. So, Dr. Rusek.
Good evening. So I'll just focus kind of on what we're working on this month, because as Dr. Carnemola said, it's been very busy. Now that some of the restrictions have lifted, we've been able to get back together and get really back to work. Not that we've really ever stopped, but we're just in a higher speed right now. So 3-5, if you recall, in those grades, we implemented Writers Workshop this year, and we had the training in January. After the training, we asked for teachers who wanted to be part of a pre-implementation experience and pilot one of those units this spring with some support, and we had a number of teachers rise to the occasion, and we're very excited that those are now rolling out to our students, and the students are absolutely loving the units, as are the teachers. So very promising of what is forthcoming. Our science... the teachers. So, very promising of what is forthcoming. Our science group has been working, K-12, to finalize the units of studies so that we can move them forward to the Curriculum Professional Practices Committee and ultimately to the Board. If you recall, we had a full curriculum review and revision with science, and now we're just kind of putting those final touches on to finalize that work. Social Studies actually met today to do their curriculum review, 7-12, doing that vertical review in terms of determining what the written and taught curriculum look like, what are our short-term and long-term goals. So, we will be continuing that work, and hopefully, we'll get that to you by the end of the year, if not the beginning of next year. But, that work is moving along. So, that is the work for the month of March. We're very excited. This coming Friday is our last full PD day for the year, and we have a lot of great things planned. Our K-2 will be having their Readers' Workshop training, and then we will look for people that want to do that pre-implementation experience also as we move into the springtime. When we move up a few grades, Thompson Brook and the Middle School will be meeting to talk in content areas, English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, so that we, again, have that smooth transition for our students, six, seven, eight, and have that planning going. We have a lot of different curriculum groups going and work. In technology, we have a nice blend of opportunities. We have some facilitated trainings or sessions for folks. We also have been working with these software companies to have them remotely facilitate some of the work, again, to deepen our staff's knowledge on those different software and platforms that we have available to us. And then, we have a whole self-directed technology piece where our Technology Council, under the direction of the interim Director of Technology, and she also has created a number of tutorials online for people so that they can do that self-directed learning. So, for example, there's an extensive array of resources on the Ben Q boards that people can actually work on the boards in their room and get more comfortable, and again, take it to that next level of learning. So, we're very excited about that. In special ed, they'll be working on their IEPs. The state has a whole new platform for that. So, this will be the initial rollout training of, you know, coming soon to a theater near you type event, so that we can begin getting ready for that work. And then, some transition work. Our high school will be working on the NIESC for three hours of the day, moving that work forward. And then, we have other things like, you know, PMT training, we have CPR training, we have some mindfulness. So, it's a really nice blend, and those are just a few of the offerings. Within the Board Shared Drive folder, there is actually a folder with all the professional development that we shared at the Curriculum Practices Meeting. We have put this whole catalog in there for your review. So, we encourage you to take a look because there's a lot of exciting things happening.
Well, thank you. You made it so I didn't have very much I had to say. There is a lot happening. I'd also just point out that with some of the restrictions being lifted townwide and statewide, Dr. O'Neill and team has been looking to continue to place more of our students on the outside for internships. We're coming up on another season of that through the summer. Obviously, in the fall, when, no, the summer, when a lot of our students do their internships, as you might imagine, I think we've said before, that has been very difficult in placing some of our students in the kinds of settings that they have gone into in the past. However, we've still been working on it. Just a reminder, I'm sure Shirley will send it out regardless, but the public, the budget hearing is April 4th that we all usually attend. Our policy meeting is the next night, April 5th. And then, April 6th is the, I believe, the tri-board meeting, the Board of Finance meeting, where the final numbers will be set for the board and the town as a whole, and the date established for the referendum. So, we'll send out reminders about that and any other information that you may need. We're working on our final presentation. As you know, we revamp it at each level that we do it for the audience and the timeframe that we're in. So, Susan and I are working on that, and we'll be gaining it to the town by the end of next week. And I'll share that with you before that heads over. And again, just thank you to AMS for coordinating the students coming tonight. We will have to get a new school to recognize some folks, I think, at the next meeting because, if I remember correctly, you were at the February meeting also. There's been a lot happening at AMS. One of the things that we, you can expect to see at an upcoming meeting is we'd like to recognize a number of our high school students. It's that time of year when students are being selected as National Merit Scholars or finalists, scholarship opportunities, signing on to colleges to play sports. And our athletic teams have done a phenomenal job. They've had fantastic seasons, as I think you know, here at Avon High School. So, we're going to utilize the next month and the month after to recognize some of them also, the valedictorian and salutatorian, once those are named. So, thank you again, AMS. Thank you, Mr. Saroy. Thank you, Ms. Wallace, also, for helping Ms. Moye and I coordinate the board appreciation materials. That was very helpful. And I'll turn it back over to you unless anyone has a question for me.
Do board members have any questions? Okay. Just wanted to make sure I see everybody. Thank you very much. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. I'll take Jeff L. in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And Jackie as well. So, that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Under new business, we have the Green Bank Solar PPA Resolution. This was brought up in the Finance Committee. I don't know if, Jay, if you want to speak to any of it, or if we just have Susan give a brief synopsis of how that went.
Susan has spent a lot more time in this than I have, so I will let her have the honors of explaining what's going on. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Good evening. We have with us two presenters from the Green Bank, but just a brief overview. I've been working in collaboration with a town, particularly with great Steezy, who's here this evening, trying to find some opportunities townwide for cleaner energy options with our buildings. And the projects come down to two buildings at the, which are both school buildings, both Avon, Avon High School and Roaring Brook School. Now that we just put the new roof on Roaring Brook, we're trying to leverage that opportunity to put some panels on there. Emily Basham and Mackie Dykes are here with us from the Green Bank. They're going to give a quick overview of the presentation you all received in your board packet, and they're here to answer any questions you may have about the project. Thank you. Mackie, Emily?
Great. Thanks, Susan. Good evening, board. Thank you for having us. Can you hear me okay? Is that better? All right. It's our first in person in a while, so. Can you tell? I'm Emily Basham. I'm a senior manager with the Connecticut Green Bank and joined by Mackie Dykes. He's our VP of Financing Programs at the Green Bank. And as Susan mentioned, we just wanted to provide an overview of the work that we've been doing over the last year together to develop these two projects and give an overview of the projects. Next slide, please. So, we're the Connecticut Green Bank. If you're not familiar with us, we're a quasi-public state agency. So, we were created by the legislature in 2011 to provide financing for clean energy projects and help the state meet our clean energy goals. We use a limited amount of public funding to leverage it, to bring in multiple, multiples of private capital for clean energy projects. Next slide. So, we've been working with towns and cities to do solar projects since our inception. And we know that these projects can be a lot of work. They can require a lot of steps. So, the last two years, we've built out a program to particularly assist towns and cities to take this process and do solar projects. So, we created the Solar Municipal Assistance Program, and we competitively selected a technical partner, CSW Energy, who helps us work with towns and provide the support through this program. Next slide. So, our goal here is really just to make the process of going solar as easy as possible for our towns and provide, you know, technical assistance and project development every step of the way, from scoping where a site it should be that's appropriate for a project, all the way through construction and owning the project. So, this slide shows our program steps. There's a lot on here. I think the high point here is that we really start at a high level, take a comprehensive review of the municipal sites and town, and work with the town staff and the BOE staff to find the feasible sites, the best sites to do onsite solar projects, and then work to develop those projects, secure the incentives that are available for them. We ran a competitive solicitation, an RFP, for a contractor to build the projects, and we're really at this final step of executing a power purchase agreement for the projects, which Mackie will touch on. All right. And this, this slide really just puts like dates and steps, I'm sorry, dates and the timeline to all of those project steps that we've done here in Avon. So, starting a little over a year ago, working with the town staff and the BOE staff to secure those incentives and run the procurement, and had great conversations with the Clean Energy Committee and the Town Council about these projects. So, that really brings us up to date. Next slide, please. I mentioned this program is relatively new, so Avon is participating in round two with eight other towns who are also receiving this kind of full suite of support to find where good solar projects are and deliver really healthy savings to your energy costs through these projects. This slide's not quite showing up as it should, but we worked with, you know, 14 towns through Solar MAP with this additional support, but there really is a broader network of towns and cities that we've worked with at the Green Bank to install solar projects. So, that slide should show many more towns that we've worked with. Hopefully, it shows up in your paper packets. Next slide. And now, I'll turn it over to Mackie just to touch on the power purchase agreement and the projects.
Great. Thank you, Emily. And again, thanks for having us tonight. Next slide. So, there are two primary motivations for going solar. The first is clean, carbon-free power. The second is saving money. By having your own onsite generation, you, you have to avoid buying electricity from the utility, and you also insulate yourself from rising utility rates. Just here, you see the pattern over the last 20 years of electric rates. And I think, as we've all experienced at home, those tend to go up rather than going down. Next slide. So, Emily referenced the power purchase agreement. This is the actual structure which we would, which the BOE would go solar through. So, rather than purchasing the systems yourselves, the Green Bank and our partners will actually be the owner of the solar system, and we will sell you the electricity from the power, or excuse me, from the, from the system. So, we oversee all the development, the construction, as well as the asset management throughout the term of the power purchase agreement. Next slide. The primary benefit to doing this is savings. Right now, you're paying Eversource an electric bill. After the solar is installed, that bill will go down because you're buying less electricity from Eversource. You'll still be paying for, you'll get, you'll need the same amount of electricity, so you'll be getting a portion of that from the solar system, which you'll pay us for. But, together, that bill plus the reduced Eversource bill is less than what you're paying now. So, that's where the savings come in. Next slide. And there are a number of other reasons to do a PPA. Primary ones, aside from the savings, are the fact that as the owner of the system, we're responsible for all of the operations and maintenance. So, over the 20-year term of the contract, there is no cost to, to the BOE. It's only the savings from the, from the reduced electricity. And this slide also, the graph there really highlights the fact that as you, the utility costs go up, you're insulated from that rise because the PPA rate is fixed throughout the term of the contract. Next slide. Let's talk about the two projects. Next slide. The first is this building here, the high school. As you're probably aware, there are already some solar panels on the roof. We'll actually be augmenting that system. That's the blue panels that you see here. The PPA rate will be a 22% discount to what you're paying the Eversource right now, and this will provide 23% of the electricity for the, for the school. So, you know, not a, not a large portion, but there's only so much roof space here. So, we were limited by the available space. Next slide. And Roaring Brook School, here, it is a 28% discount to the utility rate, and we're able to produce about half of the power needed by the, by the school here. In this case, as you see, there's a, there's a lot of available roof space, but we needed to focus on the newer parts of the roof. So, these were the ideal areas for solar. Next slide. So, altogether, we're looking at average annual savings of just over $27,000 and well over half a million dollars in savings throughout the term. You see all the environmental benefits from the projects down below. And I believe with that, next slide, oh, yeah, the timeline. Emily's already discussed, we've been working on this for, for a while. Been meeting with various committees of the town and the BOE, and here today with sort of the, seeking the final approval for the two projects.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and joining us at the larger board level, in addition to attending the Finance Committee that we had held. We are looking to take action on this tonight. So, if board members have questions, go ahead, Lynn.
Hi. I, I had one quick question. Maybe you answered it, and I just missed it. But, on page 32 of our packet, so that's where it says, "First Year Savings," why is the first year savings so much less than the average annual savings?
So, that is because we've built in that anticipated increase in electric rates. So, the, the average, as you saw from that first slide that I showed, the average increase is around 3%. We, we've estimated 2% just to be safe. So, as the rate goes up over time, that you would be paying for electricity, your savings goes up, right? So, right now, it's a, I'd say, I think it was a 25% discount. Yeah. In a couple of years, it'll be a 30% discount.
That's assuming, yeah, okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Go ahead, Laura.
Couple of questions. Who's responsible for the maintenance of all the components? And is there any hindrance to our ability to maintain the buildings on which they sit, such as the need for roof repair, or I don't know what else might come up. But, just curious as to how that all works once the system is in. Who owns it? Who maintains it?
Yep. Great question. And that's one of the benefits of power purchase agreement, rather than purchasing it yourself, because you transfer potentially all that risk and all that responsibility to us. We are fully responsible for all of the equipment, making sure that it's up and running. There are certain pieces that we expect to not last throughout the term of the, of the PPA. We're responsible for replacing that equipment. And the incentives are where you want them because we all, we're fronting all the capital for the project. We only get paid back if the system's working. So, we are monitoring that system on a regular basis. If it's not producing what we think, we're sending someone out to fix it. We're doing annual preventive maintenance visits. And again, all, you know, we're incentivized to make sure that it, that it is running. In terms of the impact on your facilities, you know, one of the, as you saw, we really focused on certain pieces of the Roaring Brook School in terms of the roof. We, we wanted to install just on new.
No, 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 Shane, I can supplement that, Mackie, to answer the question. So, thank you. So, the Director of Facilities, Miles Altman, has walked around with the Green Bank's team to ensure that the placement of the panels and the design of the system would not hinder anything that we need to do in terms of maintenance and regular prevention from our end with our HVAC units, snow clearing, all those things. He was an integral part of the design of the project to ensure that very question, Laura.
All right. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I had raised several questions in Finance Committee, and I appreciate that many of those questions made it into the FAQ in the packet, and I appreciate the answers. I did raise, and it's not so much a question, but it's a continued concern. My understanding is this is a locked rate for 20 years, and my concern has been that there's been, we've seen fluctuation in energy costs over the years. In addition, knowing there's a variety of potential legislation, both the state, federal level, that could impact the cost. Having a locked rate for 20 years makes me concerned that at some point, there may not be a savings, especially because our savings is relatively small. I love any savings, don't get me wrong, but it's only $27,000 a year, based on your projections that every year, the cost of electricity would go up, which has not necessarily always been the case. And particularly right now, starting at a time knowing that inflation's so high, I question whether or not the cost is overly I question whether or not the cost is overly inflated to reflect inflation. I just have those concerns that we're locking ourselves into a 20-year rate with very small margin of terms of profit that we may lose some of that. That's only my real concern that I raise.
So, yes, it's a definite concern, and we're, I mean, that's why we don't even really look at projects unless we can offer at least a 10% savings, because you're right, I mean, you saw on the chart earlier, they sometimes do go down. We never want that to happen, where one of our customers is underwater on the savings. So in this case, where you've got a 22% and a 28% discount, the PPA rates are lower than, you know, prices have been in well over two decades. I mean, I think if you look at the starting point on that slide, they, those rates were still higher in 2020 than the two PPA rates here. So, you know, definitely a concern if there's not a lot of room in between, and certainly, I mean, generally is a concern because you're right, you don't, we don't want to be paying more for the electricity from the solar than your.
And we, there is no safeguard over the course of 20 years for the board. If the price drops and we're not saving but actually losing money, there's no out for us. We inherit this for 20 years, and that's my other concern.
Jeff, one thing we're seeing, particularly in our electrical bills, in where the majority, I believe, and Mackie can correct me on this, but the majority of our savings is in the delivery of it, not necessarily the generation. And that's where we're seeing from Eversource. We've seen bills from them recently where our delivery charges were twice as much as our generation charges. So that's where the stability came in, and discussions with the town that's stabilizing the cost for the board over the period of time with the fluctuations, particularly from Eversource, on something that's not reflective of the energy generation. It's just the supplier, and we're at the mercy of them on that. And I don't see that going down 20% to offset the stabilization. So could there be a point in time where it's net zero? Absolutely, that could happen. Is it likely? No.
Go ahead, Jay.
So thank you again for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. Actually, they were answered at our Finance Committee, but I just want you to repeat the answers so the full board and the public can hear. But one of the things I just want to elaborate on is, is why it makes sense to go through you or someone like, you know, you as the Connecticut Green Bank or someone else, as opposed to us installing the solar panels and just the incentives that others receive.
Yep. So two answers. One, just the structure, the PPA. So there are a lot of federal tax incentives that are available for solar, very hefty incentives, which as, you know, as you well know, you don't pay federal taxes, so that essentially is money just left on the table. Through this PPA structure, we bring in partners who are able to take advantage of those, and we pass through a good portion of those savings onto you through the lower PPA rate. So, you know, unless you're getting a large grant to pay for purchasing the solar, typically the economics just don't work out to buy a system unless you have that federal tax appetite. And then the other point I'll make about the benefits, through the SolarMAP program, we're aggregating projects from eight other towns, so we're able to get, you know, substantial economies of scale in terms of just the cost to build these than if you were to go out on your own with an RFP.
And then my other question has to do with the students. If there is a way for Connecticut Green Bank to provide an educational opportunity to help with curriculum, or the students to learn about solar, and just, you know, any benefits you could add there.
Sure. Yeah, we also want to be able to show off sort of the benefits of clean energy, especially when our systems are located at schools. So we're including as part of the program, a monitor that could be placed in, you know, maybe a lobby area or a highly visible area that shows the monitoring, which the Board of Ed would have access to regardless, showing sort of the production of the system, and it could be, you know, interactive, and it could be something that could be incorporated in curriculum, or, you know, anything like that.
Anybody that hasn't spoken yet? Okay, Laura, go ahead.
The only other thing that had occurred to me is, are there any supply chain risks in terms of the materials that are needed to continuously supply whatever the components are that actually are used to operate the system? And if at any time, that system was not working efficiently and we couldn't get the components that we needed, are we still locked into having to use it? Worst-case scenario.
So the, I mean, the primary equipment are the panels themselves, as you can imagine, then the inverters, which switch the electricity into usable form for the building. The inverters, or excuse me, the panels are warranted for at least 20 years. I was, but they're typically last much longer than, I was actually speaking with someone here in Avon who's got panels from the 1980s that are still working. So we would anticipate the panel, again, they're warranted for that long, so they're, we would anticipate them to work for that, for that long. The inverters, they will not last that long. We're, you know, we're staying ahead of those replacements because again, we want to make sure the system's running to its full potential to earn back the money we've put out for the system. I guess the greatest risk to you would be if, you know, 10 years from now, when the inverter's likely to go bad, if there are serious supply chain issues and we can't get our hands on one, there would, I mean, there would be no cost to you. You would just save less because the system's not producing as much, you're having to purchase electricity from Eversource, as opposed to getting the cheaper power. I really can't speak to supply chain issues 10 years ahead, but, I mean, we are, we're constantly trying to stay ahead of any issues that's going to cause the system not to work because again, the risk is on us on that production.
I know, right now, we're just talking about the high school in Roaring Brook, but are we, is the plan to put the panels on all of the schools eventually? Is that something that we're thinking about?
We're, you know, we're working and evaluating depending on the age of the roof. So some of the roofs are, if they're going to be replaced in the next five to 10 years, it doesn't make sense at this point. But as we get new roof replaced, that we'll continue to look at the projects as we work with the town and with the Clean Energy Commission at the town, we'll continue to evaluate whether or not particular buildings, and it could be the police, the DPW, or one of the schools would be a good project, and continue to work with the Green Bank on that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else? Jackie, do you have one? Or you have one, Jeff? Jackie, you're good. Okay, Jeff?
Just a follow-up. In the event later down the road, we decide to add additional panels, are we required to use Green Bank, or can we go through the competitive process to find?
We're not required to use anybody. We can go through a full RFP or do something different at the town at that point.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Ready to take action, Jay? Do you want to make the motion?
No, I just want to ask the administration what their recommendation is and what they need from us.
I don't think everyone heard. Jay's question is to ask the administration what our recommendation is, and Susan, I'll let you speak to it first, since you did a lot of additional legwork since we met as a Finance Committee.
So our recommendation would be to move forward with the two buildings. Given the climate right now and the rising energy costs, do not foresee any time in the near future, nor in the long future, to have a stabilization. You know, when I went out to bid with the town just recently for our Eversource supplier, we used Constellation for our regular electricity. We had a delay even going live with that for a few months in order to capture a price that was more beneficial, and that was substantially higher than we had paid in the past. So the ability to lock in our generation charges for a period of time at rates that are very reasonable given the market, I do recommend that for future savings.
So obviously, from the financial standpoint, we vetted it to the best of our ability because, as you say yourself, and to some degree, this is a gamble, which is not something that we like, we enter into lightly as a school district or Board of Education, because there is, there's always a risk that the prices could drop. It does not certainly look as though they will, based on the research that we've done over the past 20 years and what our utility bills have been for at least the past year, which, as we all know, have continued to rise, though some may be due to inflation. From the financial aspect, as Susan just said, we feel that it's a reasonable investment that we shouldn't be in a position where we don't have, and we'll say, cost avoidance, because cost savings is difficult to project forward. But looking at the research that they've done, that we've done, and looking at other projects that have been done in the state, it seems to make financial sense. And I guess what I would say from a recommendation standpoint is that even if there are years where there is not a savings, you know, hopefully it's not more of a cost, but potentially just a zero-based savings, we still invest in clean energy.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Laura.
And I think the green energy piece is obviously something that it's important for us to consider. I am curious, the Police Department building was eliminated from the proposal due to economics. That's a pretty vague statement. Does that mean they felt their return, rate of return just wasn't high enough? Anybody know why they were eliminated from the process?
And that was actually the case where, you know, I mentioned we want to make sure the discount is at least 10% to the current utility rate. So, you know, every project is particular in terms of the, what feeds into the PPA rate. In that case, you know, when you, it can cost more to build a project, you can, it can be located just so you get less sun, which is actually a big factor. If, yeah, so in the case of that, that project, we couldn't meet that minimum of at least a 10% discount, so didn't even bring forward a proposal.
So obviously, it's not just about the economics, it's also about the green energy. They're both important.
Through the chair, if I may, because to speak to the same, after our Finance Committee meeting, I spoke at length with Mr. Robertson about the same thing, the town manager, because one of the questions from the Finance Committee meeting was why the school buildings and none on the town side made it through the process. And basically, it's exactly what you just heard, that either there's not enough roof space. We are the biggest buildings in town, generally speaking, so we have more available space for solar panels. We have invested in capital projects repairing and replacing our roofs over the past 10 years and continue to do so, so we have that in our favor for being able to support the solar panels. There are other town-owned properties where the potential for solar panels exists. They are primarily not buildings, however, they would be fields, open space areas, and that lends itself, I think, to a different discussion on the town side also about investing in solar panels that are going to become a large part of a piece of open space or a recreational field.
So before I make the motion, I also just want to thank the Clean Energy Commission, and I see Grace here, I know she spent a lot of time in working on this, and my understanding is a recommendation of the town manager, assistant town manager, to move forward with this. So given all that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to move forward with the proposal as presented tonight.
I'll second it.
That was Lynn, or that was Laura?
I think I beat her to the quick.
Okay, that was Laura. All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jackie and Jeff? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much for taking the time to come out, and it passes unanimously, so thank you.
Thank you all. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you for joining us, Grace, too. All right, now we have our second communication from the public. Is there anyone here who would like to take an opportunity to speak to the board? Ms. Dawson?
Hi, I just, the superintendent brought up the Bridges Pilot Program, and I just wanted to speak quickly on that. My son actually was one of the seven participants that participated on Monday, and he loved it. He came home beaming, and he actually told me he wanted to do it every day. For me, as a parent, I just, I can't tell you how much it means to me to see my son and his self-esteem boosted, you know, that high from an experience that he had at school. I look forward to seeing how much he grows inside as a person, and just knowing himself by seeing himself in others, which he really doesn't see that much of on a day-to-day basis because he is part of that minority population. And while we're not part of the Open Choice Program, we do reside in Avon. We are African-American, and the percentage of African-Americans in Avon is very, very small. So I just want to say that I think it's a great program. I look forward to more mentoring programs being rolled out, and that particular program being rolled out, because I think that the benefit to the students and their self-esteem and their connectedness to the Avon community, I mean, it's hard to quantify that. So I just wanted to say thank you for pushing that forward, and I look forward to seeing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. We appreciate that. Anyone else? All right, now we move on to communication from Avon Board of Education members. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Lynn, go ahead.
Just briefly, I want to thank the community for the swag. I can't wait to get my sweatshirt. I don't want to get too political, but I'm so glad the Bear won for Avon Middle School. I think it was a great choice, great vote, and the music tonight was just spectacular. Thank you so much.
Agreed. Go ahead, Katie.
Thanks, Deb. I would just like to also say thank you for everything tonight, the music, the packets were great. And a special thank you to my fellow board members and Dr. Carnemola for my time on the Board of Ed. As my fellow board members and Dr. Carnemola know, I had to put in my resignation effective April 1st, because we found out very unexpectedly that we're relocating from my husband's job shortly after I was sworn in for the Board of Ed. So I just wanted to say thank you for, albeit a very short experience for me in Avon, it's one that I'll look back upon fondly, and I will look forward to getting involved in my children's next school system. I have little guys, so we have a long way to go, and this has been a really good experience for me to know what to expect moving forward. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for everything, albeit short. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. We appreciate you being with us as well and staying on as long as you could, so we appreciate that. Anyone else? Go ahead, Jeff.
I just want to follow up and extend out to Katie. Thank you again for everything. I've gotten to know you quite well, and your commitment is what brought you here, your commitment to your students, commitment to the community that brought you here. I know this was truly unexpected, and it was never planned for, but I personally want to thank you for giving up your time. We all know the commitment and the sacrifices, and you really stepped up, and just know that it is heartfelt from your fellow board members as well.
Agreed. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Jackie, did you want to say anything? All right, so good you can hear us. I'm so glad that's working. I can see her on the screen, and luckily, it's working well. All right, thank you, everybody. So at this point in time, we do have an executive session that is planned. I would like to invite in Dr. Carnemola, Dr. Nestle Rusak, Mr. Roberto Medick, and also the candidate. Do I have a motion to move into executive session to interview a candidate for Director of Technology? So moved. All right, Katie moves, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, 8:31. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. So since we are moving into executive session, I would ask that those of you in attendance, you can excuse yourselves for this time. Thank you for joining us.